Good evening, Coach Heath.
I go from one meeting to another and I'm trying to change it and I couldn't get in. I'm trying.
That's okay.
Well, they make fun of me as Sienna all the time because I'm always, I don't look at it and I'm always mayor and they're like, ooh, the mayor's here. And I'm like, stop it. They're always making fun of me. So I'm always changing it around and then I forget. And I just looked out. I was literally trying to change it when you were saying that. So.
I'm sorry I brought it up. I apologize.
I don't care. It's fine.
Oh, boy. Well, here we go.
Yep.
Another day, another dollar.
Chairman.
Good evening, folks.
How are you, sir?
I'm well, thank you. Adam Mayor, nice to see you.
Hello. Nice to see you. Someday we'll all stop being in our houses and try to do this.
Actually see each other face to face. Yeah.
Yeah, Don, I got a question for you. So last night, I'm in my crazy time at Sienna. So I was literally running from one thing. I ran across campus. So I just went to my, I went to my office because it was easier because I was going to have to go back to work because I worked till about 11:00 last night. So I just ran into my office thinking it'll be quiet and no one will be there. And then a bunch of people came in and they were like yelling. Could you hear it in the background?
Uh, you know, I don't remember that, but.
Okay, because I was like, I couldn't tell them to be quiet. I'm like, oh, I was like panicked because they were being really loud right outside my office.
I mean, if we, actually Sharon was in here most of the time. We probably just thought you were having a big party.
Oh, I was just like, I'm not doing it in my office again. It was just that it honestly, it was just a lot faster than coming all the way home. Like, I mean, going to the city chambers was never a big deal because that was close. But yeah, so I was just like, oh, just do it at Sienna. And then I regretted that when they all came in yelling to do workouts. They were all just like being rowdy and I was like, hmm, but I couldn't tell them to be quiet. So. I was talking louder to talk over it so no one would hear it, hoping. Well, that's good to know because I wondered if people could hear it. So.
I thought you were just trying to, you know, talk over me, get rid of me to go away.
Never, Don. I like hearing your voice, whether we agree to disagree or we are agree in agreement. I still like hearing your opinion. It's always valuable.
You know, if we all agreed, it would be a pretty ugly mess, wouldn't it?
That's right. True.
We're going to strike out after the meeting and go to sauce.
I haven't been out yet because I had the meeting last night and then, um, yeah, and we're not doing it tonight either, but we've been wanting to go. It's just because of our schedules. But. Yep. Yeah, I've been dying to get out there now that we can get back out. I will admit, we were the probably the worst people for eating at home. We ate out a lot. So this was a struggle during the pandemic, but we got better at it. And now I think we've gotten used to cooking more at home. So. Yeah.
I was saying to Don, I'm not, not going out for another two weeks. I'm getting my second shot on Thursday morning supposedly.
My son got his today. He works at Brookdale and he said his arm's a tad sore, but no different than the last time. And so far he feels the same. So. That was good because they say the side effects are worse on the younger, the older you are on the second. That's what Dr. Yarrow was saying on a call I was on last week. If you're older, it doesn't seem to be even affecting you. It's the younger that are having some side effects.
I got my second today.
Was that Bob?
Yeah.
Ian?
I'll get mine until March 3rd. We just had our first on Friday. So.
I think my third eye is coming.
I'm not gonna go there, Bob. Yeah.
As long as I get a better vision, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Where's the baby tonight, Bob?
Uh, he's being put to bed already.
Wow. So 33 responses in one day to our newsroom. Popping the 32 that we got in two months previously. Yeah, I'll do mine tomorrow and I'll send out a note to all of my, all of my partners in our downtown buildings. So.
No, I feel fine though.
But.
My son does too. So.
I see Krista is here. We're waiting for Mrs. Weatherby. Who, as far as I know, was planning on joining us. We'll wait just a minute and a half or so and then get started.
Joining now.
There she is. Hey, Mrs. Weatherby. Okay, it's seven o'clock according to the little tiny clock on the corner of my computer and we will call to order the February 2nd meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. Mr. Clement, would you take the role, please?
Your microphone's.
Jeremy, we can't hear you.
Well, he's figuring that out. Just to let everybody know, there's a few extra people in the meeting. So just a heads up, I'm going to keep an eye on that. But if the meeting ends for any reason, just go back to the same link.
Okay.
Now we can. You can hear me?
Yep. Yes.
That's weird. I can't hear you through my headset, but I can hear you through my webcam. Um, Johnson.
Here.
Watson.
President.
Jacobitz.
Here.
Cotton.
Here.
Weatherby.
Here.
Gauss.
Present.
Love.
Present.
And I'm missing one more. I don't have my thing in front of me.
Taylor.
Taylor. I'm sorry.
Here.
Okay, everyone present in the count of four. Thank you. Consideration of the minutes from our January meeting, commissioners, you've had an opportunity to review those. The one thing I noticed that I mentioned to Jeremy earlier is under case 21002, the backyard chickens. The very last line under that case says motion carried four to four and it should say died four to four. Other than that, were there any other additions or corrections to the January minutes? If there are none, we would entertain a motion for their approval.
Approval with the one change to motion died for case 21 dash zero zero two.
Okay. Okay. Part from. All those in favor, please indicate. So I say an I.
I.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Folks, we have two items on our agenda this season, in case 21005, which is a number of things related to a marijuana grow facility on West Beecher. And a rezoning request for 1853 West Beecher. That's case number 21009. Going to a clerical oversight, not all the adjoining properties owners received. This is relative to the rezoning. Not all the Jamie adjoining property owners received the legally required notice. Therefore, not, we're not able to consider this case this evening. I would profusely apologize to anybody that this inconveniences. I would entertain a motion to table this case until our February meeting, until our March meeting. Excuse me. That would be March 2nd.
Motion to table.
Support.
Motion from Cotton, support from Weatherby. All those in favor, please indicate. So I say an I.
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 Any opposed? Those, those of you that were here for that case, like I said, I apologize. It was a inadvertent oversight. But we are not able to consider that this evening and we will have it on our March agenda.
That was 1853.
1853 West Mami Street. That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, case 21005, 1610 West Beecher Street. This is for a marijuana grow facility. And actually, this is a, not to overly complicate it, but this is a three-part case. There's, we need to consider it as a site condominium. Which there isn't any real criteria for in our ordinance, but we still need to take a look at that. We need to consider zoning exception permit for it and a site plan review. With that said, is there someone here to represent this particular property?
I, yes, you have Greg Zalinski with Objective. We have Charles and John with AMAG Architectural Group and we have Patrick Parker as well on the legal side.
Okay. Well, Greg, if you're going to be the spokesperson for this, if you would very, before we get into the, into the, the depth of it, if you could just very briefly, give us a thumbnail sketch of what it is you're proposing to do.
Is this something, if you want us to present, I can ask, I believe, John to present it. Do you want us to present it live to everyone?
Sure. You know, like I said, a thumbnail sketch would be great, but yes, please.
I think Greg would be helpful if he could like give the thousand-foot view first and then John can move into the specifics.
Exactly.
Um, all right, perfect. So thousand fear view, obviously 102 acres. We are looking to develop the first of the frontage of the 20 acres is for a marijuana cultivation and processing as well with the opportunity for, for retail. The remaining acreage, we're looking to set up as a condominium association to, to use that to also for other opportunities from a marijuana cultivation businesses and or other light industrial businesses, really from a top level view. And I know John has the layout. If, if John can actually present that, we have the layout of really the, the 20 acres that we are looking to, to develop on the cultivation and processing side. And then there that we would set up from a condominium association site as well, taking into consideration, you know, secondary egress and, and some of the, um, some of the other things that we would need to get this set up as well.
Hey, thank you. I think we're going to hold off on the details until we get to the site plan consideration. Okay. Commissioners, this has been proposed as a site condominium. And as I said, our ordinance doesn't specify any criteria for creating a site condominium other than dimensional ones. Staff has reviewed the plans that were presented and, and can concurs that the, that it meets the dimensional requirements for buildable lots and access and rest to the property. Is there any discussion on that from the commission?
I have one question. I know there, there will be four additional lots beyond the 21 acres, right?
Uh, yes. So we would, uh, we are looking at parsing them off into 10 acre parcels or have 10 acre parcels on there to start off. So we would take, uh, we would use the 20 right away to, to set up our cultivation and processing facility, which is on the site plan. And then from a condominium, we would then have that and, and parcel them off into, to 10 acre parcels.
I believe the way their site condominium plan is working is that they have two units to begin with. The, the first phase, which is the 20 acre parcels they're proposing to develop. And then another unit, which is all the remainder. When they're ready to proceed with development of the remainder of the land, they'll have to bring in the extension of the road and utilities and then the additional parcels that they want to create for that future phase.
Any, any use there on any of these parcels would have to be compatible with the industrial classification of the property. Correct?
Yes. Correct. And the lots would have to meet the minimum lot size and width requirements of the high one district.
Okay.
But did you say, sir, that minimum 10 acres?
Well, that's what we would be looking at, you know, if, if we had an opportunity to build out 20 or 30 acres. Then, then we would, we would do that for, for somebody as well. But we're going to start off with, with 10. If, if another marijuana cultivation facility wants to come in and they want, they want to build on 30 acres, then, then we, we would give them that opportunity as well.
Yeah, just, I mean, I think the 10 acres is more than what the minimum requirement is for a condominium site. So that, that's cool. That's fine. Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on the creation of this as a site condominium? Hearing no comments on that. Commissioners, staff has, as I said, has reviewed this.
Chairman?
Yes.
Somebody's raising their hand, I think. Jamal? Or maybe, I don't know.
I think it's just his finger touching his screen, maybe.
Yeah.
Well, okay, maybe not. Sorry.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I know that at least one person has joined the meeting late and their primary interest is in the lightning quick location. You may want to let people know that that has been tabled.
Uh, if anyone was here for the rezoning of 1853 West Beecher, the convenience store. Owing, not to repeat myself entirely, but owing to a error made in notification that was required. That item has been tabled and will not be discussed or acted on this evening. It'll, it is currently scheduled for our March 2nd meeting. Ross? Mr. Dempsey? Best I can do, Gordon. Okay, back to the site condominium. If there are no additional questions or comments, staff has provided, provided a resolution for our consideration to adopt that resolution would be to approve this as a site condominium. And we would entertain a motion to that effect.
Move by Watson.
Support.
Okay, we have motion in support for the approval of that as a site condominium. Jeremy, if you would take a roll call vote, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I have to use my headset. I mean, I apologize. Um, Gauss?
Yes.
Watson.
Yeah.
Weatherby?
Support.
Cotton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Support.
Taylor?
Support.
Chikovitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Motion passed eight zero.
Thank you all. Next, again, relative to the same property, we have to consider both a zone and exception permit and a slight pant plan review. And while we will take those as two separate issues for a vote. I would suggest that is for a discussion matter, we consider them together. I would offer that, which I often do when we're considering a zoning exception permit that in general, we need to consider, does the proposed use meet the specific requirements, which we'll get to as we discuss specific requirements? We need to consider whether granting the permit would have an adverse effect on the environment or the value of surrounding properties. We need to consider if the proposed use is compatible with adjacent and surrounding properties. And is the proposed use consistent with the city's future land use plans? And then specifically with regards to a growth facility. And tell you what, we'll get to that as, as we go through this. But in that case, gentlemen, from objective growth, if you again would tell us what it is that you're proposing to do.
Uh, yes, thank you. So really it's going to be as well in, in two phases. Ultimately, it's going to be 18 and, and John, if you can bring this up, it's going to be 18 outdoor greenhouses with a, a, a metal structure where we're also going to be drying and trimming. Obviously, we would have, we would have employee break room and there would be a reception area. First phase would be starting off with the first nine greenhouses. These are outdoor greenhouses. We would be utilizing the outdoor elements in our, in our growing. So obviously the sun, we would be utilizing the outdoor air. So it's really kind of like a modified greenhouse. It's not something that is what's across the street, which is like a hybrid greenhouse. We would be growing seasonally. So really we'd like to start in May and, and kind of harvest in, in September. We'd like to try to get five months as, as, as one turn. And, and really we'd be utilizing the elements, the outdoor elements. So as far as the sun, we would really wouldn't have any supplemental lighting inside the greenhouse. We would use blackout curtains. Obviously, there are certain days and months where the, the, the daytime is more than 12 hours. So we would obviously use blackout curtains to ensure. and months where the, the, uh, the daytime is more than twelve hours. So we would obviously use blackout curtains to ensure that it's fully uh, dark in there. Uh, we'd really be using, um, really just the outdoor elements. Um, uh, from a, from a growing standpoint, uh, we would, uh, then, uh, in September, we would, we would harvest. Uh, we would dry any product, um, and all product in our, um, headhouse. Uh, we would obviously do any trimming and then, and then later on, we, we'd then, uh, processing, um, that flour into oil. So all, all of our product, um, uh, coming out of these greenhouses will be turned into, into oil. So, uh, we would have, uh, full-time twenty-four hour, uh, security. It would definitely be fenced off. It would be gated. John obviously has on their full-time security guard twenty-four hours, even when we're not growing. So in the off-season, so in the winter months, we would still have staff on site. We would still have a full-time security twenty-four seven. We'd still have um, an employee that would be there and watching over everything. But this is right now a seasonal, um, a seasonal turn that we would have. And then phase two would be, um, the other nine greenhouses. So for a total of eighteen greenhouses.
Greg, Greg, do I understand that these are like hoop houses?
Uh, yes, yes. So, uh, poly sides, poly top, um, they have, we, we would have, um, you know, our, our circulation would be gable vents and things like that, um, kind of what you have across the street. If, if anyone's familiar with that is those are hybrid greenhouses. So those are enclosed and insulated. They are still using, obviously in the summer, they're still using the daylight, but more supplemental lighting in the winter where the daytime is shorter. Um, they are using blackout currents, but our is going to be, um, just like a, a hoop house or, or kind of like a greenhouse where you would see, you know, if it's vegetables or flowers being grown with poly sides, a po- a poly roof as well.
Now, when we say this is going to be seasonal, the greenhouses will be in place though year-round or will they be?
Yeah, so, yes, they are going to be, um, they are going to be in place, um, year-round. Uh, we are working with, um, Adam, uh, delete from, from B F S. I've spoken to him about three weeks ago and we're working with our greenhouse manufacturer to ensure that the poly meets, um, a couple of things really from a, from a building code standpoint, obviously the integrity, the structural integrity from a wind and load standpoint and snow standpoint. And then from a B F S, you know, it has to meet, uh, the prior criteria, smoke development, uh, flame spread. So there's really only a couple of manufacturers for that. So we're currently working with both the greenhouse manufacturer and, um, B F S. Ensure that, um, we have the correct poly that is.
Folks, if you, if, unless you're, unless you're called on, I'd appreciate if you keep your, your microphones muted.
The hot fucking camera that I have.
Okay. Commissioners, questions so far here? I noted in the, the staff recommendations that the, and I realize that's also what the, uh, proposal is, that these will be seasonal. Um, but staff has recommended that the greenhouses only be used from spring through fall. Uh, I'm not quite sure that the greenhouse was meant so that you could grow things year-round.
So yeah, these are seasonal, but I didn't want to confuse it with the greenhouses across the street. Those are actually considered modified or hybrid greenhouses. Uh, I know some people maybe took tours across the street. I just didn't want, I wanted to make sure there was no confusion. Cause yes, greenhouse is a greenhouse, but some of them are hybrid where you can grow all year, but these are not. These are seasonal.
Will these have utilities in them?
So, uh, these will have, um, these will have, uh, power, yes, for just, um, a- any kind of regular like lighting that we would need to service, um, the greenhouse, right? If, if it's at night or when we have our blackout curtains, when, when we're fully dark, um, to ensure that we get some, um, visibility. And then also we are going to have fans. So we are going to have gable fans. We got to move de-strat fans. We got to ensure that we're moving the air, circulating the air inside the greenhouse. So yes, uh, we would have powers, yes, in those.
Okay.
Well, there's no heat.
Um, in this, in the summer, we're not going to have heat, um, but if we end up keeping the poly on, um, and, and this is, and, and we're going to keep the structure, uh, with the poly on. And that's kind of what we're waiting for is to get the rating of the, the, the snow rating, the load rating, and then also working with B F S. Uh, we would like to keep the poly on. If we do, then we would have, um, a little heat to ensure that, um, these do not freeze over, obviously during the winter months.
Could you speak to your odor mitigation plans?
Yeah. So I do apologize for, for sending these late. I think we sent them over at about, uh, four fifty, but we are going to utilize um, carbon Merv and coconut medium, uh, filters on all of our extractor fans in our greenhouses to make sure that we capture this. Um, all of our, uh, greenhouses are going to be activated carbon filters, which we can kind of send information on that as well to ensure that any air that leaves the greenhouses will pass through, um, these filters to ensure that it cleans any air going out. Um, and then obviously for the fencing, we're going to make sure we have privacy fencing, like the mesh fencing to ensure that we kind of keep everything inside. So it's not fleet, uh, free flowing and, and things like that. And then obviously making sure that we, uh, plant, uh, the correct species and things around the fencing. Um, to make sure that also works and helps with mitigating any odor. But these Merv carbon filters that we are going to be using to push air through it, uh, as it leaves, the greenhouses really do, uh, do uh, clean the air and make sure that it, that it filters it before it leaves.
Was there a landscaping plan included with the, uh, site plan?
Y- yes, there was.
What page am I looking at for that?
It is John, I think we're, he's presenting it right now, but I believe, um, we did get a recommendation on kind of, uh, uh, working in some variety. So I'm not sure if John updated the variety on this one. I think it looks like he did. It's page nine of sixteen.
Okay. Ah, thank you. Got it. Okay. Commissioners, additional questions for the applicant?
I have some.
Please go ahead.
Well, I, I'm, uh, I'm really not, uh, sold on this greenhouse concept here. Uh, staff referred to it as hoop houses. And, uh, I mean, it almost looks like we're going to be growing outside. I don't know that we have anything in our ordinance is about hoop houses. And if you look at what we say about greenhouses, it's not all that definitive. I'm just not sure that I'm convinced this is, uh, the way to go. Uh, I, I, maybe I'm, uh, just too used to looking at flourish across the street, but, um, and I understand that everybody's going to build to that standard. That's one of my concerns. Another one I have, um, and I don't quite follow the reasoning here, uh, the area to the north of your, um, large building there where you're going to process everything is gravel. Yep, that's right. And, um, uh, staff indicates that since you're only going to be using the greenhouses from spring through fall, um, you don't need to have that area paved. They also indicate that it would be used, I believe, for overflow parking, uh, during seasonal activities. My question would be, why are we not requiring this organization to pave that? When in fact, everything across the street and everything else we've approved has required that those parking areas be paved.
I could address that if I may. This is Johnny Aslan from Aslan McLean Architectural Group, forty-four eighty-eight West Bristol Road in Flint. And that, this is a, um, to be used as a staging area. Uh, all, all of the parking will be happening here in, in the paved parking area. Um, we've indicated an area to the south of that as a land bank parking area because we don't believe that we're actually going to need as many parking spaces as, uh, we had to calculate. So, um, the staging area is going to be primarily used for when dirt comes in, that's where we'll be broken up into smaller quantities. When, um, um, pots come in, they'll be staged there and then eventually moved to the greenhouse. It's a, an area, a, it's an outdoor work area, so to speak. And those areas, uh, based on the ordinance are not necessarily, um, mandated to be paved.
How many employees are you anticipating to have?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry?
How many employees do you anticipate having?
With the, with this nine greenhouses, we're anticipating to start with ten. Ten to fifteen employees. And then as more is needed, as John mentioned, we do have the land bank for additional parking. But the, the staging area is used for when we start harvesting, um, the greenhouses to get them ready to bring them inside into the drying room, right? We're not obviously leaving plants outside exposed. We would, we would never want to do that. This is just temporarily to, to get it ready and bring it inside. Or, you know, we have to get dirt ready to go and pass to get a bat. It's just a, it's just a, an area for us to have where, where if we need to do something quick, we can do it, but we do not want to keep plants exposed to, to the elements or the environments, uh, that are out there. And, and really, um, uh, sir, to, to your other question about the greenhouses, I, I don't want you to think that these are just a poly tarp that goes over the sides where the sides are, and, and I can send you a picture of this. It, it, it's, they're, they're actually, um, raided and wind and snow raided. It's not where you're just putting a, 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 a poly tarp over and on the sides. It's not like, uh, uh, what you're thinking of, of a hoop house. It's, it's a modified greenhouse. It's not what flourishes, but, um, they are raided. Um, for snow, they are raided, um, for wind. It, they do have, um, sections of sides in there where, you know, we're going to put, uh, ventilation and fans, right? That, that actually are incorporated into the sides. It's, it's, it's not really just a, a, a tarp or anything like that. So, um, I don't want you to think that these are those style greenhouses. And then for us, it's, they are going to be raised off the ground. So it's not like we're, we're not planting in the ground. We're not planting in a raised garden bed, what people might do in the backyard, right? I mean, these are all, all the plants are going to be in, in their individual, you know, fifteen gallon, uh, pots. Um, they're going to be separated. Um, there's going to be definitely room, uh, in between them. They're going to be raised, um, off the ground. So it's not just, you know, we're throwing, you know, plants and dirt and, and we're just going to let them, you know, work off the elements in the ground. We're definitely not going to do that. We are going to have a, you know, sophisticated irrigation system as well to ensure that, that they're getting the nutrients where, where, you know, they're getting what, what, what they need. So, um, it's not, I don't want you to think that we're just gonna, you know, open it up and just throw plants and dirt and, and in a raised garden bed. It's, it's individual pots and, and, um, that are raised off the ground.
Okay. Greg, a question for you. This is obviously, um, our building department will have to approve the plans and, and inspect everything, right?
Yes, of course, yes.
So who, who, um, question on, uh, the main road and the utilities coming to the site? My assumption is all those expenses are incurred by the developer. Is that the case?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yes.
Well, Mike, you're shaking your head. I want to make sure that's the case.
Yes, that is the case.
Yes. Folks, tell me about the fencing. Uh, the entire property is fenced.
Yes.
Um, I'm a little concerned when you said, well, the, the, the gravel standing area is going to be used, you know, for, for loading and unloading dirt and things like that. Is that all visible from the street?
We would, we, uh, the fencing is eight foot high and we are going to put, um, privacy, um, mesh or, or I'm, I'm not sure if you've seen that they sometimes put slats in between. So, no, you would not do this. Plus you would have the headhouse in front of it if you're talking about from Beecher, right? But even if you're talking about this, from Beecher, you, you, you definitely, I mean, you have so many other things in front with, and plus we'd have landscaping and we would have the mesh covering going along the fencing.
And what about the adjacent properties to the east?
They would, they, they would not see it as well because we, we would definitely have landscaping and the mesh. And again, this is temporary, just as we're, you know, moving stuff from our headhouse into our greenhouse or vice versa. Or we get a, um, a delivery of, of dirt and we have to move it inside. It's, you know, we'll quickly drop it off there and we'll quickly move it inside. Again, we don't really want to leave anything in the elements to, to try to contaminate either the plants or the dirt or anything else that we're going to use. Cause if we get any of the plants contaminated, then that, that's going to be the remediation is, is, uh, very time consuming and complicated.
Greg, you need to be more clear. Like, when you say, you know, I'm going to be honest, when we all, most of us took a tour at Flourish, their dirt came in packaged bags. They do it inside when they open it up. Does yours come the same way? Or is it just a big dump truck comes and dumps a big pile? And then you're scooping product into buckets, moving them into greenhouses like it's a nursery?
No, it's organic cocoa that we use and it comes in a pallet of maybe sixty, sixty bags. I think there may be forty pound bags. Uh, but yeah, no, we're not getting a dump truck of dirt and dumping it. No, these are, these are in bags. Um, everything we're going to use is going to be, you know, the organic cocoa. That's our median that, that, that we like to use. Uh, and it comes in bags and it's stored inside.
So there'll never be any bulk material dump truck and stuff piled up in the yard?
Oh my God, no, we would have, that would be a contamination disaster. No, not at all.
Uh, you, you just have to realize we're not marijuana growers. So when you say stuff's getting staged, that's what I thought. And I'm like, that's not what we want.
No, 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 not at all. Uh, we're, we're definitely going to have, uh, area in our, in our headhouse to store everything. It's just truck comes in, guy gets on a forklift, unloads it, you know, puts it inside right away. Um, that, that's really what it's for. No bulk deliveries, no, no dirt being dumped, uh, on the gravel site, not scooping it up.
Is this your, uh, first grow operation or do you have other operations?
Uh, we do have, we do have one in, um, Columbia, uh, currently right now. And, and we are working on, uh, on another one also, um, in Michigan.
Columbia, the country?
Or South Carolina?
Yeah, no, I apologize. Columbia, yes, in, in South America, yes. Uh, we do have a, um, in outdoor grow there as well, um, and processing.
Commissioners, additional questions for the applicant?
Uh, can somebody, I might, I don't have enough knowledge to read these plans completely, but these gravel driveways that are going around, you know, you say, we're not going to be doing anything in the winter. You know, uh, but, you know, two years ago, it rained every day for two months. Gravel driveways aren't going to do much good if they're not done correctly. Is there in here, you know, instructions on what they have to do in order to make it? Or can they just go over to Tom Neal's place and grab a bucket full of ground up concrete and plop it on the ground and call it good? That's, I, is that in here somewhere? It's on sheet C eight. They brought it up here. We, it's essentially, it's not just, you don't, we don't just pour stone on the ground. It's actually, um, uh, a sophisticated development of a, of a, of a surface. So yeah, it's, it's well defined in the drawings. We're using twenty-two A limestone over twenty-one acres limestone base.
I know that to follow up on that question, uh, uh, suppose, I mean, I'm reading our, our staff report. The fire department wanted a paved driveway that would encompass the eighteen greenhouses. They're going to be used in the winter months. And I know you're not going to use them in the winter months. Uh, I guess my question would be, um, what's to say you're not going to have a fire there in the winter? I mean, I don't know. I assume that's why the chief wanted to have it paved so he could get his trucks in and out of there. But there's no guarantee that this fire is going to happen from May to September or whenever you're growing. That's just make that point.
We sort of did a hybrid approach to what chief was looking for. Uh, I mean, the, obviously chief's primary concern is life safety. And if they're not being utilized in the winter months, then that's much less the concern. So we, we, we put the paved accessway in front of all the greenhouses that allowed for the intermediate ones, uh, to be gravel, um, with the stipulation that, uh, there would be, uh, no growing in the winter months. His concern is, I mean, obviously in the, in the warm weather, he's not concerned about driving a truck on the gravel. His concern is that you can't really plow it in the winter and therefore, uh, it might be inaccessible in the winter time.
Mr. Allen? He was, he was okay with his trucks going on a gravel driveway. trucks going on a gravel driveway the rest of the year?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
But his concern was it couldn't, he was concerned that it couldn't be plowed during the winter? Is that what you said, Greg?
Yeah, it's not an all-weather surface. That's the concern.
Okay.
I have a question. We're looking at the, you know, the gravel driveways and parking lots, whatever, and I'm not overly concerned. The question I have though is, as we face in other situations, will we be creating a precedent that we will have to live with? And a whole bunch of other places, you know, if and when we approve this?
I don't think we are. I mean, I was more concerned before the mayor, mayor and I had called with the applicants last week and uh, you know, it really became clear to me on that call, maybe for the first time, that what we're really talking about is basically an agricultural operation here, given the seasonality of it. And, I mean, this is, this is so far above and beyond what we would require for any other kind of agriculture. Uh, we don't have a lot of agriculture, obviously, in the city. You know, it's, it's really going above and beyond for, for what it actually is, it seems to me. And and, and because of its uniqueness, uh, given the seasonal nature of it and the restriction we're going to put on if you choose to approve it. Uh, as it relates to that, I don't feel like we're setting a precedent, no.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions or comments? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission? On either the granting of a zoning exception permit for this operation or relative to the review of the site plan? Don't hear any. Jeremy, did we receive any written or phone comments on this proposal?
No, we did not. Can, can you hear me now? I think I fixed my mic.
Yep, yep, we can hear you.
No, we did not get him.
Okay, thank you. In which case we will go to commission discussion of this. Alter to the zoning exception permit, the criteria we need to consider is does the facility have a valid license, uh, by the state of Michigan? Uh, or is one in process? Greg?
Uh, it is, but they can speak to their status with the state, but they've applied, uh, and they're in our process.
And we've applied for a permit from the city?
Yes.
Everything, all operations will be within enclosed buildings or greenhouses?
Yes.
We do need to, uh, staff will need to review the odor abatement uh, proposal. Because that's one of the criteria we need to consider. That, and that's it, I think. You know, commissioners, my, my, I kind of can share Don Taylor's concern. And that this looks like, this has the look of a very temporary operation. And my concern is if it, if it doesn't make a go of it, three or four years hence, we're stuck with this queen flapping in the wind.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Boss.
Do, does Jeremy or this, is some, is there someone that would be able to provide us with a photograph of the hoop house? Or, or what it is we're looking at? The only thing that I have to, you know, compare it to is the little igloos that the restaurants have put outside so that they can have outdoor dining during the COVID restrictions. So I, I mean, I don't, I'm just not familiar with the concept and I'd be more comfortable if I could see what it looks like.
These structures are eighty-one hundred square feet. So that's going to have to be some type of substantial construction. There's multiple, there's multiple roof lines. I would think it would be something similar to what you see behind Barrett's. With those, they're more substantial structures, they're more permanent. They have theirs during the winter time, uh, unoccupied. But, uh, with the venting that the applicant wrecked or, um, commented on, but that, that's what I would see. Just be the sheer size of those, it's going to have to be something that has significant framework to support those spans and, and loads like he was referring to.
Would it be similar to the hoop house at the, uh, at Promeda, the Hickman Hospital? Probably?
I'm not familiar with that one, Dan.
Okay, well, I think it, I think that's probably.
I don't, I don't think that's anywhere close to eight thousand square feet.
No, no, it's
Yeah, these are small.
Small, but yeah.
I, I think misnomer in our staff report. I, I think they're really, you know.
Well, that was my turn.
And I don't know, John, do you have a detail of the greenhouse?
Greg, do you have, do you have the pamphlet of the ones you're, you're looking, using?
These are the, we, we, let me see if I can get pictures. Um, these are definitely permanent, um, structures. Mr. Johnson, to your point, uh, again, these are not poly sized that we're throwing over. The, the company we're working with is Nexus, which is the same company that the greenhouses are manufactured across the street from Flourish. Flourish used greenhouse, uh, Nexus greenhouses, really the brand there. So those are the ones that, that we are looking at and trying to get, um, all the information back from them. There's where hybrid hours are, are, are the ones that, that are not utilized all year round. Um, so after this, I can definitely put together, um, and send something over Greg to you and to the team as far as the model that we are looking at. Um, but they are permanent structures. Um, and, and I think Greg knows that, you know, speaking to Clark and Jimmy, this is not a two, three, four year, uh, project for us. I mean, uh, we're a young team and we're in it and, and this is something that, um, um, that is going to be successful and, and these greenhouses are permanent structures. I just want to reiterate, but I definitely will, Greg, we'll get back to you, um, either tonight or tomorrow morning and get you more information, um, on, on the model.
To the, to the question about, uh, you know, the potential for abandonment, uh, you know, I would just note that they're acquiring from the city a hundred and two acres of land for well over a million dollars. I, I don't think it's very likely that they're going to abandon the site.
Is it my understanding that the sale is contingent on our approval of the site condominium, the, uh, and site plan and the zoning exception?
They have a due diligence period that allows them the time to, to seek that, yes. And, uh, if, if they don't achieve those entitlements, then, uh, they may or may not, uh, remove that contingency.
Hey, commissioners, any additional discussion or questions?
I guess one of the things I still struggle with is the gravel part beyond in between the, the greenhouses instead of completing the whole pavement. It just seems like we require so much from all the other marijuana facilities. And we're, it, it's almost like we're letting a couple of things stop short.
Well, I think that what's unique about this is that they're separated into lots of individual greenhouses, right? And if this were Flourish, for example, you would have one gigantic greenhouse and you'd have a
Well, I understand that, but I, I would think that with the traveling between those greenhouses, you'd want something even sturdier, more. And to look better, but I, I guess that's just a personal opinion of mine of what we're expecting for these marijuana facilities.
Yeah, as I say, I, I think of this as a, a little bit unique in our experience, much more much closer to agriculture than it is to industry in this particular case, given the technology that they're utilizing.
All right, drop dead date on, uh, the purchase agreement?
Their due diligence period expires this month. I don't remember the exact date.
Commissioners, what's your, what's your pleasure? If we're inclined, if we're inclined to approve this, uh, both the zoning exception and the site plan, uh, review. I would think that a couple of things we would certainly want to make as a contingency that the city staff has received and reviewed the odor abatement plan. That they've received and reviewed the organization's security protocols. And that we would set specific dates for the spring through fall operation of the greenhouses as opposed to just spring through fall.
If we're going to set those dates, Mr. Chairman, we'd probably need to get some input from from Greg on that. I mean, I don't know the growing season, so.
Right. And, and the one thing we have to consider is after the growing season, right? We still have to trim, uh, process, dry the product. So yeah, after we remove the, the, uh, the plant material from the greenhouses, then we would take them inside to obviously dry them, trim them, process everything like that.
And Greg, what we were getting at there though is we would like dates certain as opposed to simply saying
Oh, yes.
they, you know, spring through fall.
Yeah.
What dates would you, do you have dates you would suggest?
The, 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 I'd have to get with the team and get back to you. Obviously we would have to look at the weather patterns. Uh, uh, I'm originally from Buffalo, so I know sometimes, you know, you, you, you think it's, it's May and it's beginning of May and it could snow one day, you know? So that's something I would have to work on with the team and the owners and, and definitely get back to you. That, that's the difficult part.
Well, and, and my concern is, is if we, if we simply say, I mean, we, we can't say
Yeah.
I don't think from a legal standpoint, we can't say after the last snow has melted or
I, I, I would, I would, um, I'll, I'll get with them and, and, and get back to you on that. We'll have to look at the weather patterns and, and historical data as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Boss?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna shoot myself in the morning for even suggesting this, but it seems like we have a number or at least a couple of unanswered questions that we think we need answers to before we can make the decision. By the same token, we're, we have pressure and reasonably so to make a decision before the expiration of the purchase agreement. I don't know that there's any, any way that we can get the answers to our questions so that we can make a decision without having a special meeting. And like I said, I'll shoot myself in the morning for even having thought of that, but is that something that we want to think about?
Well, here's the thing. I was discussing this with Jeremina, Jeremiah earlier today relative to that rezoning request that we had. You know, for our meetings, we have to give, what, two weeks notice?
Not, not for a special meeting. For the zoning exception permit, that's the public notice time, but you've, if you close your public hearing tonight for the zoning exception permit, we won't have to re-note, notice that. You just need eighteen hours notice for a special meeting.
Okay, doesn't have to be in the newspaper?
No.
Okay.
Z, do you recall, uh, when the due diligence period expires?
I believe maybe as a my camera, uh, maybe possibly the nineteenth? I think the nineteenth.
Verify that. Maybe, you know, in the next week or ten days, we can get that other meeting and get the answers to our questions and then be able to move forward. If that date's correct.
Let's, let's, Gordon, let's enumerate what the questions are. The, I know the specific dates of operation would be one of them. The odor abatement would be another one.
The better understanding of what the hoop buildings really look like, what they are. You know, I, and I respect, you know, Chad's, uh, opinion there, but I'm not even familiar with Barrett's background of back building. So, uh, I mean, I could drive over there tomorrow, but that doesn't help us tonight. So there may be other things that other people are interested in knowing, but, um, I think at least a couple of things that I wouldn't be making, I wouldn't be comfortable voting on this tonight.
Other opinions?
One way to address the spring to fall issue is to, uh, I'll probably get it wrong here, but pick the first day of spring. And
I mean, those are, those are identified as things, yeah.
And I was gonna say go to the first day of fall, but that's that's a six-month period and that may be shorter than they want. I don't know.
Sure they weren't through fall, you know, or
Yeah.
Well into the growing season, yes.
Really, the dates that we're looking for is, is, is like third week in, uh, of May till, till third week of, of September. You know?
So if we said May first to September thirtieth.
Because
And that, that's just the grow period, correct?
That, that would be, that would be the grow period. And then from there, we would bring the plants inside to dry. And that can be, you know, um, that can be a seven to ten, max fifteen day, uh, period to dry all those plants.
But they're, they're not in the greenhouses then, they're in the
Greenhouses are completely empty.
And Greg, all we're talking about is, is date limitations on the use of the greenhouses.
Right.
Correct. Uh, well, what, yeah, I mean, if, if, i- i- it would definitely be third week of September. We don't want it, uh, any longer because the, obviously the weather. You know?
So if we said the greenhouses were in use from May first to September thirtieth?
Yes, yes, sir, yes.
That would be well, well outside of both ends of your concerns.
I've looked at historical data and, and a couple, the first couple of weeks in May, sometimes it, it, it could be in the, in the forties and fifties, which is obviously, obviously cold, yeah. First to May thirtieth is, is, is a, a date that we can confirm right now. For, for correct, for, for, uh, growing. And then obviously we would harvest and, and bring the plants in, inside, nothing left outside in the greenhouses, right? We bring them inside and, and we dry them. We begin, we begin the drying process. And as far as the odor and security, I do apologize, we did send those over to the team, uh, I believe at four thirty PM Eastern, which is our security, safety and sanitation, uh, protocols.
Yeah, which, which doesn't get it done for us at seven o'clock tonight, but. Okay, so Gordon has suggested that we have a special meeting in wait for some additional information here. Uh, I'm looking for some other opinions or either confirmation of that or alternatives.
I'm okay to vote tonight.
I probably am too.
I, I, I know what the houses are gonna look, they're gonna look, are the houses like corrugated? Poly siding, like they're structural?
Yeah.
Not just, it's not just wrapped up in plastic?
If you look, if you look at the Nexus Grand Teton, that's the model we're looking at. I, I can't, I can't pop it up now, but it is a hard poly side. It's not something you're draping over.
Yeah, I mean, given the size of these structures, they have to be structurally sound.
Correct.
I would guess. I mean, you know, we've worked, we've worked through that, I think, uh, you know, I I obviously had some reservations. I asked a lot of questions and I appreciate the answers.
And, and we have worked with Adam from B F S as well prior and even before the new year to ensure that we're meeting Laura M R A, obviously Adrian's, um, building to make sure that these are structurally sound because you know, um, they are going to be up and
That's what I was like, thank you.
Correct.
That's what you're gonna do?
That's the company, that's where we're collecting information from right now, um, uh, for this. You can see the sides are the structural sides.
Right. So it'll be similar to the, the new prelips, you, which you don't know out in.
Yeah, good point, Brian.
And I believe, uh, John has the, the design layout inside. So you'll see, I believe three of them are, are connected. And that's how you get the eighty-four hundred or
Yeah, there's four, yeah, there's four bays, four inches.
Correct.
Uh, the ridge height is sixteen feet and the eaves are twelve feet. So they're, they're substantial sizes.
Correct, yes.
Not to mention the footprint.
In this, in this picture, uh, showing the four units, would, would, would the, uh, boxes on the side, would those be your ventilation system and your odor control?
One side would be bringing air in and they would be flowing through and then we would have fan, D strat fans inside blowing the air down as well and circulating it as well, yes. and circulating it as well, yes.
It would have been a lot easier if we had had this photograph at the beginning.
I, I, I.
I know.
We could have sent all that. Unfortunately, four thirty was late to get this stuff over to you, to you guys. I do apologize, we are getting those plans over.
Okay, we can probably stop the share then. Thank you. Commissioners.
I'm good with this.
Okay. If, if that is the general consensus, we would entertain a motion to, let's do the zoning exception permit first. To approve the zoning exception permit, I think we'll tie all the, Mr. Elliot, unless you've got advice to the contrary, we'll tie the conditions to the site plan.
Um, I, I think it's best to tie them to the use, to, to the zoning exception permit.
Okay, very well.
That's what regulates, you know, you, you have an ability to regulate that use with.
Okay, understood.
I have two questions.
Yes.
First is, let's say it's crazy cold all the way up till June first and they need an extended growing season. Can they come to us and say, we need this extended without going through a whole new site plan review and a whole bunch of other stuff?
It wouldn't be a site plan review, but they would have a public hearing and modify the condition if that, if that was the way the condition was worded. Now, if you were comfortable, for example, giving them a, a span from May first through October thirty-first, you know, very unlikely. Our issue is when it's, when it starts to snow, that's when we don't want them back there in the greenhouses because they don't have paved access back there. So very unlikely we're going to have any substantial snow in October either. And so you could extend it out through October as well. It doesn't have to be as tight as necessarily May through the end of September.
Well, if you think spring and fall, each one of those has three months, so that's be a six-month period. May one to October thirty-one.
I'm, I'm more comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think I am too, yeah.
I would agree.
Uh-oh, I think we lost Mike. Were you there?
He froze and he's gone.
We did lose Mike? Uh-oh.
Yep.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yeah, I was gonna say, as a vice chair, I better take over, so.
We've got a quarant.
Go ahead for it.
Well, so we need to make a motion for the zoning exception permit first, including on that, the time restriction or the date restriction of May first to October thirty-first, correct?
There he is.
You're doing fine, Brian.
Caught me well, Obi-Wan. So I'll entertain, we'll entertain a motion.
So mo.
End part.
Would that also be subject to compliance with the security protocols that they've provided?
Right, the list of comments and restrictions that we had.
Yeah, odor abatement and also the security protocols, they need to be presented and approved by the city.
I'll amend my motion to. Mike's kinda.
Support.
Sorry, Brian.
Okay, Mike.
Again, roll call?
Yes, roll call.
Watson?
Yes.
Johnson? Or?
Cotton? Yes.
Gao?
Yes.
Taylor?
Support.
Kovit?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
The exceptions passed eight to zero.
Okay. And then on to the site plan. I believe that we got all the contingencies we were concerned with tapped on to the zoning exception permit. Were there additional ones from staff? I don't believe there were.
No.
Okay, in that case, we would entertain.
I don't believe there were, but I do want to ask Greg Z, not Greg E, if they got the comments from our board straight about the, I, I know this was a little bit late for them, but for the landscape planning.
Yes, we did receive those comments, I believe it was, to add variety. And yes, we're definitely, and I believe we made those changes, John, and sent them last week. But yes, we are proceeding with making those recommendations of adding variety, yes.
Those changes were made to the plans, yes.
Okay, great, okay.
Okay, with that all said, we would entertain a motion for approval of the site plan as presented with the additions to the landscape portion of it that have already been submitted. Was there a motion from Commissioner Cotton with support from Commissioner Taylor, it sounded like to me?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Jeremiah, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Johnson? Or?
Um, yes.
Gao?
Yes.
Taylor?
Support.
Kovit?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
Watson?
Or?
Site plan, but site plan has passed eight to zero.
Okay. Is there any other business to come before us this evening?
Public comment?
Do you have a comment, Mr. Taylor?
Public comment, Mr. Chairman?
Is there any, that was what I was asking for?
You says any other business, well, never mind.
Okay. I would ask you to make sure that you check your email for the survey that staff sent around. That's the, related to the comprehensive plan, and please respond to that and share it with any other residents that you would choose to do so. Is there any other comments or any other, other business?
I do want to point out, if anyone has to do the citizen planner, try to get with me so we can get that taken care of. You know, I'm probably going to take it myself too, even though I'm at school for it. So I'm looking at doing that now, so if anybody wants to do that soon for the part of the requirements.
Very good.
You can get that going and get that paid for.
Just an update program with citizen planner?
Um, it's the one from MSU Extension. I don't think it, we, we're allotted so much in the budget, so if you want to take it again, I don't think there's an issue. But there's required bylaws to, to take it.
My question is, if we've already done it, is this something in addition to that?
No, bylaws always think that you have to take it one time. So, you know, like, you know, Commissioner Johnson hasn't taken it, obviously. He's new to the mission recently this past year, so not pointing you out, Chad.
I need to too, I know that, but I'm gonna have to wait until I get my year-end tax stuff done before I can jump in.
And all that's fine, I think it's just in all fairness, I'm gonna take it too, even though I'm at school for it, I'm gonna take it too, just because it's only fair. So I'm kind of pointing that out that we can pay for it now on the upcoming budget, so. Just kind of, just kind of a reminder, if anybody wants to take it, get ahold of me.
Is this all online now, Jeremy?
Yeah, yeah, it's all online. I think it was previously online too. I didn't take it then, but you're welcome to take it again. We're allotted so much and usually we don't spend it. So if you want to take it again to refresh, more than welcome to.
Okay, folks, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. We will see you on Tuesday, March second, if not before then. Good evening.
Good, good, Archie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.